Good evening. Huh? Okay, this is, it is on about seven o'clock on a Monday, June 28th. City Council tonight is meeting in a special session where we will, hopefully, we will deal with one ordinance and one resolution and read several ordinances for second reading. When we are done with that, we will move into some committee meetings. We will hear from the City Services Committee, Planning and Development Committee, Parks, Parks and Recreation Committee, Finance and Personnel. And so, we're going to begin. We have a quorum present with six members of council. I'm serving, by the way, I'm sorry. I'm serving in place of President Bill Bias, who is absent today. So, I will be, what am I, Vice President Pro Tem, I think, something like that. And so, we have six members of council present. I will be serving as a member of council also. We have a quorum of six members present. First of all, ordinance for third reading. Ordinance 6210, an ordinance to increase the city income tax by ten hundredths percent per annum for a period of 10 years, authorizing the question of the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next general election to be held on November 2nd, 2010, and declaring an emergency. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would move to adopt this ordinance, O 6210.
Second.
Moved in second.
And briefly, it is something that will take place for one year with the percent change to 1.75. Title 15 of the Athens City Code of Ordinance B and is hereby amended to provide for a city income tax for one and seventy-five hundredths percent annually for a period of one year beginning January 1st, 2011, rather than the one and sixty-five, 100 percent per annum, and returning to one and sixty-five hundredths percent beginning January 1st, 2012. Thank you.
Okay.
I would point this out, that this is for street maintenance and rehabilitation.
Streets and sidewalks, I believe is the language.
Yeah, it's a renewal. So, there is a year overlap, but it's a renewal for the next nine years.
Yes. Mayor Bias?
Mayor.
Mayor Wile?
Essentially, the estimate, this might generate about $600,000. The hope is that we can do some of our pet projects that have been languishing for many years, sidewalks as well. This would all, of course, take place next year or 2012, I think it's when it gets collected. But at the same time, it'll just be a higher rate just for that one year, next year. And again, this is for streets. If you notice that we have a list of streets, I think it's on the website now, of what we're doing this year, but we never really complete. As you know, from your street tours, we never really do more than about a third, half the streets that require maintenance.
Other comments regarding ordinance 6210? Delon?
Just to add a little bit more, I mean, this is really going to help the city maintain our streets, fill potholes, and keep everything up to shape and do a little bit more than we've been able to do over the past few years. And there's a one-year overlap, and this will be discussed more before it comes time to vote on the ballot itself, but just wanted to mention that.
Also, we do have a mobility plan for the city regarding pedestrian, bicycle vehicle, other vehicle transportation, and this could be thrown into that mix also. So, this is a, we believe, an important issue. Any other comments?
Just, thank you. I'll just add that many of us on council have received complaints or concerns about our streets over the year or two here, as well as many of you may have seen in occasion in the newspaper letters to the editors. So, again, this is an opportunity for us to address some of those issues and concerns. Thank you.
Now, let's vote on this ordinance. All those in favor of ordinance 6210, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ordinance passes, six to zero. Now, ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 6510, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the 2011 state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for issue one funds and to execute contracts as required. Ordinance 6610, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Church of Athens Incorporated of Athens, Ohio, for the rental of in-lots 15 and 17 in the city of Athens, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 6910, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens, Ohio, to execute an agreement with Hallmark, Athens Student Renting LLC, also known as the Summit at Coach Run, for water main easement. Ordinance 7110, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to make application and execute a business card agreement with Chase Bank. Those ordinance were for second reading. Next week's regular council meeting, they will be up for third reading. We have a resolution for third reading. R 0610, a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by ten hundredths percent per annum for a period of 10 years, beginning January 1st, 2011, on the ballot at the next general election on November 2nd, 2010, directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election and declaring an emergency. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, Acting President. I move to adopt this resolution, R 0610.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And again, as discussed earlier, this is allowing us to place the particular income tax for the street repair on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments regarding this resolution? All those in favor of R 0610, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Again, resolution passes, six to zero. We do have one announcement to be made. Mayor Wile, did you want to take care of that?
Last week, I think I suggested, made a motion to have, accept, appoint Carol Bailey Lewis to Disabilities Commission. I'd like a vote on that.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Carol Bailey Lewis to the Disabilities Commission.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor of this appointment?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And we are done with this special session.
Can I make an announcement?
Yes.
I would like to remind people about the town hall meeting tomorrow night, 6:30 at the Community Center.
And the town hall is regarding?
Regarding questions, answers from the last January town hall meeting.
January meeting, somewhere sent by email too.
Right. And there'll be information also about the comprehensive plan update that we're going to get tonight. There'll be copies of that.
Thank you. Okay. This special session is adjourned. Our committee meetings are scheduled to begin at 7:30. Shall we move right on?
Yeah. I think you go right into it.
Are we ready?
We have to wait for Debbie.
Our secretary?
Can we take two men up, please?
Randy gets something. Well, we will take a short adjournment, I guess. She's being followed by several candidates.
Yeah, they all just, there it is, come back.
You did pass in the hallway.
We weren't going to, I wouldn't want to start without you.
Thank you.
So, yes, City Services Committee, and last week, we made the step of saying that we were going to move from licensure to contracts, which would mean that we would, in the future, be able to have a little bit more control, a word that I'm not really fond of, but one that we may be able to exercise, a little bit more pressure. And part of that pressure, as we talked over time, would be to increase the amount of recycling in businesses and also in large residential units. Right now, our recycling, or I mean, our solid waste contract, our solid waste ordinance defines commercial as all business and residential units larger than 10, and rooming houses larger than 10. And so, this is certainly something that we need to look at, and we will be looking at in the not-too-distant future. And so, the other thing, and I have asked Roger Bales to come and talk about it because he's the person that does understand recycling in the solid waste district, to the extent that we totally understand what's going on. It was stunning at the meeting last week. We actually had the Hocking County people vote to reconsider the fee that they had just turned down, and it passed unanimously. So, all bets are off on what's going to happen here. But continuing on though, our discussion, because I think we need to have the discussion over a fairly long period of time, and actually, you all can go out and do as I did. I've got an example here from Apple Valley in Mount Vernon, which is not a model for anything much that I know about, but it's going to, just to show you how they collect their solid waste, or I mean, their recyclables. And it's just different from what we do, and I thought it might help you. And then, every time I say the word "allecat," you will know what I mean. And it's a term that is a brand name, and I probably shouldn't use it. I should say "collection device," but I'll never do it. So, Roger, why don't you talk a little bit about what will happen when this deluge of materials potentially arrives at your center? Yeah, you've got to talk.
Or you can sit here if you want, sit or stand.
Maybe I'll have better standing. There he is. Thank you very much. My name's Roger Bales. I'm the Operations Coordinator at Athens-Hocking Solid Waste District. As Nancy had mentioned, last Wednesday, the Athens-Hocking Solid Waste Policy Committee met again and talked about the need for funding for the district. They did make a motion to pursue again, increase in the fees, not to change the tiered fees at the landfill, but to create a generation fee. The generation fee as proposed now would be $3 per ton from municipal solid waste that's generated in Athens and Hocking County, and regardless of what landfill it would be taken to, whether it be the one in our district or outside our district, it would be subject to that fee. Currently, there's some communities in our waste district that has haulers that's from outside our waste district, that's collecting the materials and taking it outside, and therefore, there's no fees collected that goes toward the recycling efforts in our communities. The process for that to happen is that a public hearing be held. This morning, I was able to find and confirm a date. It's going to be coming out in the paper shortly. It's going to be August 25th, 6:00 PM at the Nelsville Public Library. Notices will be sent to the 50 largest waste generators in Athens County and in Hocking County, and to all the public entities, villages, townships, municipal governments, to look into a court of public hearing. After the public hearing, they'll take comments. The committee will, they'll reconvene after that. That meeting's been set for Wednesday, September the 8th, and consider all the testimony and the comments brought before the Policy Committee about the generation fee, and decide whether it should be enacted, should it be changed more, less, or any other adjustments. From that point, it goes back to the vote, and thank you, the city of Athens, for the last time, and it passed with a resolution the district received through the Policy Committee. We'll go through that time window, 60 days, and we'll know whether the fee adjustment will be approved or not. In lieu of that, our solid waste plan's underway now. Our five-year plan is due to be, the draft submitted to the EPA by December this year. And some of the changes that's being talked about and discussed in the committees is upgrading our MRF, or Materials Recovery Facility. We don't have a sort line or conveyor belts to sort the materials. All of our collection systems are set up as sorted at the curb, and we collect it that way in the trucks, take it back to the center, and it's processed all by hand, by manual labor. Hopefully, in a step-by-step approach, we can go and make an expansion to one of our existing buildings and make a higher ceiling, which we don't have, put an above-ground baler in with a conveyor in it, so that if we get material and it is somewhat commingled or mixed up, we can go ahead and recover that and then process that too. The intent is to modernize. There's expense that comes with that, and with the economic challenges we have right now, we know a new facility's not something that's going to happen. So, we're looking in our plan, the ways that we can do that in a cost-effective way and maintain our workforce and provide even better service to the people of Athens and Hocking County. So, that's about what we've got going now.
So, you have already in process a way to potentially deal with the recyclables that would come out of, let's say, a River Place or another large installation, if we can figure out how to get them. It seems like recycling has the collection component, and then it has the processing component, and then it has the selling component.
That's correct.
And, you know, right now, Athens is pretty strange. I think a lot of people say, oh, you're just, you know, it would be easy to combine with so-and-so. Our largest item is cardboard. Our second-largest item is brown glass. I guess you don't have to think a lot to understand what. And brown glass is extremely heavy, and, you know, in the future, certainly, there's going to be some question about, what are we going to do with that brown glass? Do we commingle it with white glass and green glass? And that will, or do we sell it as brown glass? And I see that as certainly a fight for the future, because we are not the same as any other entity in this town. I mean, we're lucky enough, I think, in the uptown area, to have it collected in a pretty efficient way, thanks to the Service Director. But anyway, I wanted Roger to come and talk to you, so that you get the idea that just as if you were going to do total quality management in manufacturing, you'd probably ask the people that work for it how they could make it better. And so, I think that, you know, we've been asking him how he can make the processes better and enlarge upon them. And that's, you know, good ideas often come from the people who are most familiar with it. You know, and I'm not trying to lay it on toothache, am I, Roger? I do appreciate his effort. Now, just let me show you one set, and he gets to go home. He'll be back to talk to us some more in the future, but I wanted to show you how, you might imagine, and I hope you all go off and look, you know, go behind buildings when you're out on your vacations, and see what goes on. This is Apple Valley in Mount Vernon, and I just thought you'd like to see what their recycling looks like. They have what is called drop-off, and we have the hauler, the hauler being in charge of this, and sometimes, they hire somebody to drive around. I think we have that also here in some areas. They're paying not $20, but my daughter just told me they're up to $22, and they have a loosely enforced two-can limit. And this is what an allecat looks like. It looks kind of rusty, doesn't it? Anyway, this is how they collect their materials. They have, as you can see, cardboard, mixed paste, and other things. This is an Apple Valley, very upscale suburb. They have this kind of oriental motif surrounding the, you can see it in the background, surrounding this gravel surface where the allecat is parked. And what would happen is, if we would use an allecat or its equivalent, or make up something like it, we would probably put in the garbage contracts that the hauler would also be responsible for pulling this baby into the recycling center and getting it unloaded. So, that would be, that's one reason why we're starting now and thinking about it.
So, Nancy, this is a sit, sits, is parked someplace, gets filled up?
Up the hill, yeah. It's right on the entrance to it, where it went. Yeah, and they pick up the garbage at the curb side, but the people drop this off on their way out of the, out of the building. In a minute, you'll get the bigger perspective, perhaps. Plastic food in soap containers, these are always a problem. Anyway, this is, they do mixed glass up there. They look like they have almost as much brown glass as we do, but I don't think it's quite that much. And then, you can see, this is the steel cans. This would be easy to separate. And then, more cardboard. One of the things they have, and I tried really hard, and this is my challenge to Roger, I tried really hard last year to find out if we could get these guys from Columbus to come down and do this paper retriever thing. And this is the yellow-green boxes, and they have about, they can get work within about 50 miles of Columbus. And so, they collect everything in one big mass of paper. It's a newspaper, and magazines, and office paper, and all kinds of mail. And if you go to some cities, they mix it. And I talked to them, I implored them to consider Athens. I said, we might have a lot of mixed paper. Right now, we have no experience with selling mixed paper, so that's one thing that Roger and Cindy have to look into. Have you guys seen these around? Yeah, they're, Lancaster is as far south as they come. There must be some kind of breakpoint. So, what they do is, they put these in schoolyards often, although this one is in Apple Valley, and they come and tip it when it's full, and they give the school districts back the proceeds. It's about maybe $5 a ton, and so, the schools have money to build, use for playground equipment, because they have maybe five tons in here, and it's money that might have gone other places, they have less garbage to dispose of. But we apparently, at this point, are a little bit too far from the paper manufacturing company, but that may change. And we have no direct experience with mixed paper, and that is a fundamental problem with Roger's line, as is the, what comes off the end of it. This is what it looks like on the inside, that mixed paper situation. And if you had the paper together in a, in a bale, it would be worth much more, but, you know, then there's the labor component of it. And so, there you can see it. They, in Knox County, where Mount Vernon is, they pull the stuff into a long building, such as Roger was describing, and offload it into bins, and then just keep on going. And so, that's basically what's going on. And there you can see the enclosure, and a bunch of them all lined up to do the thing. But this is 25 miles to, I mean, how far is it to Lancaster? I guess it's 45 miles. Yeah, we, you know, they just wouldn't, told me they would not come south of Lancaster. So, there you go. You can see how it looks. There's the allecat. It doesn't look so bad, actually. Well, I was going to go to my previous. So, see how it looked there? But they cost a bundle. How much they cost, Roger?
Around $15,000 for that hauler if you're looking at there.
Do you have any second-hand ones floating around?
I don't know of any. There may be.
I'm friendly with Linda Montgomery, who's in Knox, who's in Knox County, and she said they, they got a couple second-hand. But if, you could see these maybe parked at, at maybe a Riverview, and then you'd have the hauler, as he's going to, or she's, I guess it's not usually she. As the hauler's taking the stuff to the landfill, they put it on the back and then drag it up there, and, you know, it would be repositioned. So, it would be probably, unless somebody chooses to do it a different way, but it would be organized by the, it would be part of the contractual agreement. That's the way it might look in the future. And that's all. I promised you it wouldn't be a long, involved one. Oh, you don't want to see Baltimore. I don't want to see Baltimore. Okay. So, when you go off this summer, make sure you take a look at what's, who's doing what, and see how, how it's going. And so, Roger, thank you for coming. Anybody have any questions for him?
Roger?
Yes, sir.
Before you go, I'm aware of the fact that we have a new plan in place, to be put in place, but as it stands right now, we are not meeting the goals of the present plan. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Okay. The solid waste district currently is in noncompliance.
Can you go to the mic there?
Sure. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. Currently, the Athens-Hocking Solid Waste District is in noncompliance with our currently-approved solid waste plan, which expires this year.
And the new plan, in theory, is going to be more stringent, or more, higher levels to jump, I assume, or if that's the intention?
Right. The state of Ohio's just adopted new legislation and regulations for solid waste districts. Our plan update in December of this year can be submitted under the old guidelines and rules, but they're strongly encouraging, and we look at the changes now, because in the next five years, it's going to be, it's going to be based on a percentage goal rather than an access goal. They want at least 25% of residential solid waste diverted to the recycling, and currently, we, we're not, we're not getting close to 25. Now, in the city of Athens, we're going really, really close to 25, but when you take the whole entire county, and then Hocking County is where we're in noncompliance. So, one of these, these changes is to handle materials like the allecat, where people drive it off, and it's not as clean, and it's commingled, and it has some unwanted materials, and you have to be, have a way to be able to separate that stuff out before it goes through the system.
So, what changes you anticipate? You're talking about structural changes at the County Road, State Route 13 site, essentially, or is that discussion, or just changing configuration there, or launching it?
Well, there's been discussion coming out of the subcommittees about having more places and rural areas for people to be able to take recyclable products. Currently, our plan says that we go to each rural location once, the same Saturday of every month, for four hours, from 8 till noon, and that complies with the current regulation. But unless you have it written in your calendar, remember exactly what Saturday it is, you have only got a four-hour window to get there and get it dropped off. An allecat, like Nancy had showed there, or the, the sorted containers on the mobile trailers, can be put there for anywhere from a week to a month, and then, you don't have to remember that four-hour window. You can take your recyclables and drop them off. But with that, it takes a little different equipment to handle it and to process it. It takes the purchase of the equipment of the trailers, and then a belt line to be able to sort it once you get it back into your facility. But it provides better access, and then they say the percentage of recyclables is increased greatly.
Yeah, Knox is part of Delaware Knox, Marion, and Morroconny, so they have quite a bit of urban development in there. One of the things that I really didn't like in our meeting the other day, I mean, there was a lot of good stuff in it, but one thing I really didn't like was the idea that they were going to give us lots of points for putting a drop-off at Walmart. And I just went, oh, no! Just think about the, you know, people will say, oh, well, I brought my garbage. I guess I'll dump that too, you know? And just the possibilities there are really awful, so. But, you know, it's kind of an EPA reality thing going on, where they have, they give you money. The other thing is, we really need to get better on reporting. We don't, you know, because we're doing this kind of loosey-goosey licensure commercial, we have no idea what's going on, although the Service Director wasn't too upbeat on what she found, was she? About how much we actually had in recycling going on in the commercial?
Well, we don't know yet. We're in the process of doing that with our intern, but we're being told it's fairly non-existent, so.
Okay. That doesn't surprise me. All you have to do is go behind the buildings, and you'll see them. That's what you all have to do, is like, drive down, or go in the back of the mall.
Having said that, I think one of the reasons you've got a good percentage of your residential is with the page you throw, or the volume-based system. One can, two cans is so much. If I have an extra can, it costs me extra. It encourages recycling. In the commercial sector, you just, you just have an open market, and it just takes license haulers to move it around. We're doing pretty good on corrugated cardboard and hauling it in, but some of the other commodities, there's no incentive out there for them to divert that, and if they do divert it, I don't know that they see any savings on their, on their waste bill under your current structure.
There's our, there's our, there's our goal, to get to the point where we have that added to our commission. It's going to be a long time. Hey, thanks, Roger, for stopping by. So, we send our solid waste district as he's moving, and they will be the ones that would pick up the, do the paper shuffle for EPA, and they would also do some, do the recycling processing and sells, and would take the money back in. At least that would be their typical thing in all of the districts, and you don't have to stay. But it's, there's a statutory one-to-one tipping fee, which is there, and that's been there from the beginning for decades, or for however long, 592 has been on the books. And then, this generation fee is the new one that we were trying, that the committee thought we would add or propose to add. We've brought it down, but it's new life, it's coming back. And that would generate about $300,000. Will you think about how much it takes to, to run a very minimal program? And you see, $300,000 is not going to go very far, and fundamentally, our participation in it has enhanced or helped some of these. I'll just stop right there, but you understand. Cardboard first, brown glass second. Go look in other places and see what they've got. We come back from vacation in September, I want to hear from people and what they find.
Nancy?
Yeah.
And realize, of course, at one time, we were ahead of the curve. We were falling behind until, in the 80s, we were ahead.
I still think we're ahead. I think that they have to back those 8,000 OU students out, and then we'll be above 25%.
We asked that of the consultant, we'll find out what.
Yeah, and the consultant says, I don't know how to deal with it. Well, if you're using census data, 8,000 of the people that are counted in Athens are residents of Ohio University that live in dorms. Come on, get real. And so, the consultant says, oh, it just makes my head hurt. I can't do the numbers. And I'm thinking, mm, that makes a big difference in our final tally. Okay. Paula, do you have something you need in terms of miscellaneous for City Services? Yeah?
I just wanted to mention, with some of these voluntary drop-off places, I think it's probably going to be difficult to get a lot of participation. And one thing that other committees have done is require certain types of businesses that generate huge amounts of recyclable materials to recycle it, and I wonder if that's something we might want to at least entertain the possibility.
And, you know, when we go into that, one thing we need to do is look at the website for ODNR and see what they're saying about both Walmart, I hate to say it, and Pro, and what, how much corrugated they're collecting, and they're quite proud of their activities. So, I mean, we really do have a concentrated downtown beer center, brown glass, and then we have the corrugated out in the mall. It's not as bad as it could be, except for the scattered-around part that's the residential areas.
One of the weak points of this, of course, is that Nancy and I are both on this Policy Committee, is the, how they do the counting right now for percentage is actually taking a fraction of the population, depending on whether it's a rural drop-off or an urban drop-off. And And the difficulty with that is that they're just counting hypothetical numbers. So that actually doesn't reflect actually what's being recycled, which makes it very difficult to say, let's correct this when we have, we don't really have a good baseline to start with. I mean, and is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
Based on a formula, we predict.
Yeah.
Yeah. And actually, we're, I think Hawking County is actually a little bit ahead of us in terms of recycling. I think they're 74% versus 71. Of course, the aim, of course, is supposed to be what, 90% or something like that?
I don't, I don't. Until she backs OU dormitories out, I'm not even listening to her.
Well, she's not our consultant.
No, I know. She's the commissioner's consultant.
Okay, yeah, so.
There you go.
I, I do want to say instead of a blanket statement about commercial non-existing recycling, we do have some businesses that absolutely recycle as much as they possibly can. I think we're all aware of those businesses.
And I think there are some that actually are using the current recycling pickups.
That's exactly.
And even twice or so a week, which means that we would eventually price it accordingly. If you can save on your garbage bill, why not? Which is the whole point, the incentive base. Okay, so are there, yeah?
Thank you. I just briefly, I just wanted to acknowledge that I support Member Bain's efforts here on this issue and appreciate it. Mr. Bale's, I, I support efforts for us to modernize the process and do what we can to increase likelihood of recycling within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any finances?
Not at here.
Okay. Okay. I'm passing the baton to Planning and Development. Thank you. I think it's snappy. Really slowly now.
First of all, I would like to bring up, we have a, a letter requesting, it's a granting of an easement to the city of Athens for the bike way near the library. And this is more housekeeping. Obviously, we know the bike way is there. However, this is more paperwork to, to do a contract between the state of Ohio to grant an easement to the city of Athens for 25 years for purposes of the bike way. And that's along Home Street from library, you know, going out to the, the river. So we have the contract on, in Debbie's office, in the council office, for people to peruse. We don't need more, that's more administrative. Second, I would like to welcome Paul Logue and Ed Baum tonight. As everybody knows, we have a comprehensive plan, the Athens 2020 Plan. And council put together an advisory committee, the comprehensive plan review and advisory committee, and they've been working for the last year and a half to two years, reviewing the comprehensive plan, putting together ways that we can identify and work towards the goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan and to identify areas probably that in the future need to be updated in the plan. And Paul Logue and Ed Baum is here tonight to produce the first annual report for the comprehensive plan advisory.
Thank you. I should say I'm Ed Baum, 20 Sunny Side Drive. And actually, we're here, we're a special committee to encourage council to read more during the summer, so we have something to give you.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Do we get copies too? Oh, wow. Thank you.
Everybody will be tested in two weeks.
As Chris noted that, this committee was created a little over two years ago as part of the comprehensive plan itself to basically find out what's happening with the plan and to recommend actions in order to implement the plan. This is a progress report. It's not a complete report. You'll find some areas that are well-developed and some areas that are not that well-developed. It also refers in the introduction, when you read it, that there are some scorecards. They're not in the document that you have, but they will be included in the CDs, which Paul is going to prepare for tomorrow night's town hall meeting. This will be in that, on that CD among some other things, plus also the scorecards. What the, what we've tried to do in the five major groupings of our task force was to identify five items and you can just pick up any one of the goals. The first question is, was the plan safe? Because the plan is our guideline for what the city is doing. The second is, how do we know if we're doing it? And that's basically, how do we measure it? Some of these are statistical measures, some of these are qualitative measures, some of these other kinds of things are either yes, we've adopted it or no, we haven't adopted it. The third is, where are we now in this process? Now, we recognize that the plan in its basic format is approaching 10 years old. Wasn't adopted by the council until 2007, but that was after the city had been given it for two years and it went through a whole series of meetings by the planning commission so that most of the recommendations come out of a series of meetings, town hall meetings and other meetings, focus groups, surveys that were done in 2001 and 2002. So the question is, where are we now in the plan? Where do we want to be? This is based up on what the plan says and where we expect to go and what needs to be done. Now, if you look at the first little staple part, and I'll let Paul talk about this, you'll notice this is an executive summary which asks the question, what does council and/or the city or someone else need to do to move us further forward in the plan?
Well, I think Ed covered it pretty well, but the first two pages, we wanted to just give you an action summary. So if you don't have enough time to really read through the 40 pages that we've already included, you can go with this and these are the action steps really saying, if we want to move forward or to move forward with what is recommended in our comprehensive plan, these are some of the steps that we as a community need to take. Some of these are steps that the city as an administration needs to focus on, others are things that city council would, and others are things that other organizations or in the community should be working on in accordance with us, so.
I would also note that we have not attempted to prioritize the items. That's what council's responsibility and the city's responsibility. But if you want to move the city forward to be the kind of vibrant progressive city that we believe that we are and will continue to be, these are the kinds of things that really still need to be done. And you can take them, look at them in the planning and development committee. Council as a whole, some deal with the arts, some deal with history, some deal with housing. So it's a variety of things, but the plan says we want to be certain place by 2015 or 2020 and these are the kinds of things that really need to be done in order to move us along. I would also note that in most of the planning literature, they say the plan should be revised about every five years. Somewhere along the line, one of the realizations that we've come to is that there are elements that weren't in the original plan, which we've added partly through town meetings. Emphasis upon sustainability, green efforts. Were really not emphasized in the plan as they were not done 10 years ago as they are now. So those kinds of things really need to be updated and it will be city council's responsibility somewhere in the future. My own preference is sooner rather than later would give serious effort to the ways in which the plan should be gone over with a fine-tooth comb and updated. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Thank you. I'd like to point out, first of all, I would very much like to extend my appreciation with working with the, the members of the, the committee over these last two years and their names are listed here. Many have, they've all given their time and energy and a lot of really good ideas and hard, hard work. And I would very, very much like to appreciate and to show our, the council's appreciation for their public spirit and their work on this. And one thing is, is this makes Athens Athens is the amount of public spirit and participation that we get from public particip, you know, from just members of, of our citizens who come forward. Second of all, I'd like to point out that when you go through this report, there are things that are highlighted that we have done as a city. And I think that it's, you know, we, we say, oh, the, the plan has been around for so many years and it sounds like it's just been sitting on the shelf. And it hasn't because we have done a lot of things to fulfill the, the spirit, the goals, the guidelines of the plan. And going through this process, because I was a member of this group, it really is striking how much the city has actually gone forward and achieved from the comprehensive plan. And so I'd like to just point those out and I think that the city can work on those and work on the successes, so.
In, in that respect, a useful place to read is where we are now. And a good example is, one of the things the plan emphasized was improving pedestrian and bicycle easeability of use. And the city has adopted a pedestrian and bicycle plan. So there has been progress in many of these areas, but in none of the areas can we say we are completely done.
Good.
A couple of things. One is that, as you see, my name is one of the members here. I wish I could say I participated quite a bit. I know I had to drop out at one point just because of the demands of the office. I'd also like to point out that one of the names missing here is Kent Butler, who was part of the team early on, so.
I was going to explain that. These are the members who have been members this past year. Kent was included in the last report that was given to council by Paul Logue. He was here on the first year in his role in planning and development and then he was, went off to do something else and we probably should add him as a person.
Asterisk.
An asterisk.
Members and past members.
For example, Christine Hughes is a relatively recent addition. Ann Rubin is an addition this past year. Brian Ogle, his name is on here because he was participating during some part of the year, but he's no longer active on the committee. And then they then asked the chair of the planning and development committee to proceed with appointing some new members.
I'll take volunteers.
Take volunteers. So if anyone, everyone out there in TV land wishes to serve on this committee, we'd be glad to have you. Just send your name to Chris Paul.
Also, when you say it's not finished, in, in theory, no comprehensive plan is entirely finished anyway. I mean, it's gonna be, the goals are gonna be changing and shifting. As you said, the sustainability aspect, the U-SHED aspect has evolved. Some things we haven't moved on at all. The original plan said we need a planner. On the other hand, the cell tower legislation that was actually put in there almost verbatim has not been adopted. And I know there's, there's things that fall through the cracks and I'm aware of that. And that's, I'm glad that you hold us to task on this stuff. It'll make, it'll make good reading, I'm sure.
Anything else?
Any questions, comments?
Pleasant reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll have this information available tomorrow night?
Yes.
We'll be on the website as well.
And the website?
Absolutely.
What we're planning to do is to hand out the first, actually it's technically four pages, the first two sheets as a handout. There'll also be copies of the CD. I think you said like 50 copies, which will give to people, which will include the entire document plus the spreadsheets. It'll also be on the website as soon as we get it.
And can we put it in the library? The public library?
Put a CD in the library.
And maybe tomorrow night pitch for members who want new committee members.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, I have one from Ilahu Gostin. Please.
Thank you, Member Paul. Two weeks ago, we talked about the natural hazard mitigation plan that's currently being developed by the Athens County Regional Planning Commission. And in some, at some point in the past, the city had its own plan and different part, you know, the county had its own plan. And it's now being done under, under one umbrella so that everything fits together and then we're not working against each other if, God forbid, a natural hazard does, natural, an event does occur here. And so we, they do need, the Athens County Regional Planning Commission needs a resolution from council stating that we will participate in this multi-jurisdiction plan. And so this is something that they need three readings on. We don't have an exact date yet of when they need it, but I will probably bring it forward for first reading next Monday, or Tuesday. We'll be meeting Tuesday because of the holiday, so.
And if, if need be, you will fast-forward it and kind of fast-track it?
Yeah. It's possible.
It doesn't need it? Okay.
Okay. I'm hearing that we won't do that.
Source. Living is easy sometimes.
Sometimes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous from the planning and development committee? Okay. My committee is done. Thank you.
Awesome.
You did, ma'am.
Oh, I did?
Good evening.
I did.
I am reporting for Arts, Parks and Recreation Committee. I thought that I would jump into our miscellaneous first and then we'll have a little more time for the meat of the rest of our committee meeting here. So first, one odd, one of the notes under miscellaneous is that there's been a request from the executive branch for $2,000 to fund a drinking fountain at Sales Park. I wanted to make council aware of that request and perhaps if there's any comments from City Service Safety Director, any, anything else on that or Mayor Zoff?
We have fountains in many of the parks. We have one actually at the eastern end of the bike path. It was pointed out to me by a citizen that it would be nice to have one at Sales Park. It's actually a place where a lot of people go. They go on hiking trails. It'd be nice if they can actually hydrate before they go someplace. The pond there is probably not drinkable.
Except for puppies.
Yeah, except for puppies.
Any other thoughts or comments on that? Second, under miscellaneous is a request for improvement to our city pool. It appears that we've lost one of our diving boards. It's no longer functioning, not in operation. So there's been question or intrigue about the purchase of a water slide. And I'll try to hold, I can hold the brochure steady. For which camera am I looking at here? Who would like this? Okay. Let's see if this will show up. Steady hand here. So there's been a request and it's this side here. All right, so we're looking at a slide there. And the request for the amount of money for that would be between 14, 16,000 dollars. I'm guessing as well too that this, that this slide will be one that could then be kept if other future improvements are made to the pool or changes. I think this is something that would be amendable to that process as well. So I was approached this evening by the safety service director regarding that issue. I have not spoke to the rec advisory board on this issue nor the Arts Parks Recreation Director. So it was something that was mentioned earlier this evening. So again, if you have thoughts or comments on that.
I met actually with the, with Rich Campatelli and then was referred to Aaron Romero, the assistant director down there. Because of the loss of the diving board, they cannot replace it because of the new, you know, safety requirements. And so I feel like that age group and that end of the pool is underserved and so Aaron researched and brought me, you know, some of those slides. We can't put it in during the season while it's open, but if we could get the money appropriated and purchased, they could put it in after the season and then it'd be ready for, for next year's use. I know that there's some thought out there about improving and getting a new indoor, maybe indoor/outdoor pool, but that's going to be sometime in the future. And I think if we can, the budget supports it, if we can do some minor improvements with what we have, so.
And so I'm guessing too that with only one slide, or I'm sorry, one current diving board, then that puts a strain on, on the use of that and lines forming and perhaps other struggles or deviance or.
My goodness, we went from minor to major.
Thoughts or observations, comments? Thoughts or observations, comments?
I was wondering if there was a suggested source of funding for that, specific source identified.
Recreation budget. There's, from the unappropriated balance.
I think, you know, last year, we bought the accessibility stairway. I think that these are good investments because they can be used later. But right now, budget-wise, I don't see a new pool in our horizon anytime soon. So I think that keeping the pool that we have that's really well-used, I love it, my kids go, I love it. Keeping that up to date and putting in the money that we need to is just, is a huge community service. And it's just, I know, it's busy, 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 all the time, spilled. So I totally, it's such a good investment.
Thank you. Lastly, interesting update on some issues pertaining to the sand lots fee for the fields. The MOA was such that we necessitated $2,000 per fee for the use of the space. And I was informed just this evening, prior to the meeting, that a member of our community, Mr. Brent Hayes, wrote a personal check to cover that particular impact fee. So I thought that that was interesting and worthwhile, and I appreciate his efforts to support our community. And I know he's also donated a lot of personal time and resources to try to beautify the park and the fields. So I was just informed of that this evening, and want to share that with the media and the rest of my council members, colleagues.
I had a quick question about that. When we discussed the MOA, we discussed about the fact that like a $5 impact fee was added to each kid's registration. And we discussed that. And I'm wondering if that has been something that they have been done, that they've been doing for a few years, or not?
This was the first year that we actually assessed the impact fee. It was referenced in the past, but offset by work that they had done. But this year, we've established that fee is $5. We just came up with an average of 400 elite players. And then we've also assessed the community gardens an additional $5 per lot. We do not do that for soccer because we take in the registration and run that program ourselves.
And it used to be that baseball, we used to get registration fees for the baseball program. And so when Sandlot started, we lost those registration fees, some of those. So, right. But I mean, that should be noted, too, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? All right, into the meat of the rest of our committee here, this evening, I want to share with my colleagues on council here a handout, which I did pass out to them. And I believe the mayor's office has copies of this as well, and that will be described and defined in further detail when our guest speaker is at the podium. Tonight, we have a speaker who's going to share with us information about a grant that we're working on with the Appalachian Regional Commission, or the ARC, and the National Endowment of the Arts, or the NEA. This particular grant that we're looking at or working on through AMAC is round three of a training and technical assistance program. And specifically, this would be a gateway community tourism workshop. Essentially, and again, Mr. Winters will go into more detail about this, but essentially, if we are fortunate enough to be recipients of this particular grant, then a consulting firm or faculty from the NEA and the ARC will come meet with the ad hoc group that's been formed to offer assistance and guidance to help develop an action plan for tourism and cultural impact, positive ideas related to the arts in our community. Unfortunately, only three of these grants are awarded within the whole country.
Oh, my goodness.
On an exciting note, this particular effort is being sort of from the underside up. The leadership is coming from the arts community, directing the push to help propel this idea and acknowledge that arts is important to our community. Good segue from earlier this evening when Paul Oge and discussion regarding the Planning and Development Comprehensive Plan Review, these ideas come right out of the comprehensive plan. If we looked at the executive summary from the handout we just received just short minutes ago, goal number one was to strengthen heritage tourism, ecotourism, and agrotourism, identify tourist sites and market them, create additional fund packages for promotion. And then under history and culture, goal one, pursue and support efforts to develop a further and attractive, vibrant, and welcoming city, and become, under goal number two, become well-known as an arts community and develop, continue to develop access to and engagement in the arts. So again, this is a huge segue, again, from our comprehensive plan and efforts from the ad hoc committee and AMAC. Quickly, a reminder of what Athens Smith Arts Commission is. It is, was formed to offer support and guidance to the mayor and council on arts-related issues. Tonight, Mr. Bob Winters, who is chairman of AMAC and the de facto chair of the ad hoc committee that's looking into this grant, is here to share some insight and efforts on this. Mr. Winters is also Professor Emeritus at Ohio University from the School of Theater. Arts West, as a reminder to those of you here in TV land, Arts West was a direct result of the work completed by AMAC, along with four major policy proposals, public arts policy, public performance policy, the mural policy, and the percent for the arts policy. So AMAC has been doing their busy work, their footwork, their efforts to help intensify and beautify our community through the arts and arts initiatives and arts efforts. On that note, I'll introduce Mr. Winters, and he will share some information and more data about this particular grant that we're working on or looking at.
If it's all right with you, I'm going to read this statement. I try to condense my thoughts into an organized thing so I don't go blathering all over the place. And we get to the point, then I will be happy to answer questions or deal with comments. And I need to point out that I've been working closely with Paula and with Bob Eichenberg at the county planning office, as well as this ad hoc committee made up of leaders in our community. So I'm going to do this, okay? For some time, AMAC has been working on strategies to bring the arts and culture organizations and individuals together to support a unified focus on advocacy, economic, cultural, social, and educational development and growth. The city and county long-term heritage and cultural development plans, such as we saw earlier, and the county has developed, have been both stimulated and causably related to what we are doing, to these discussions. The ARC NEA workshop, RFP, offers the opportunity for leaders of our arts and culture communities to work and train with leaders from the city-county government, as well as the national and state parks facilities, under the guidance of nationally respected faculty from the TCF and NTFP. That's the Conservation Fund and the National Trust for Historical Preservation. They would be trained to develop the specific action strategies and plans that will build on existing assets, leadership from the arts and culture, and the outdoor recreation parks and facilities. Action plans that will increase jobs through focused, prioritized tourism development, and increased recreation, social, and educational benefits for Athens County residents and guests. The RFP initiative is designed to assist gateway communities, and that's in quotes. Gateway as defined, I'm sorry, I've lost my place. Gateway is defined in this RFP as towns and counties that border publicly owned lands. We border an awful lot of publicly owned lands that are not on the tax base. In this case, they're referring to national and state parks, forests, and facilities. A key issue included in this RFP is the need to address the important balance between economic development through tourism, et cetera, with responsible stewardship of the natural resources, arts, and cultural heritage. That's key. That's what they're trying to do here, is put that together, working together with groups from the counties, from the organizations to do it. AMAC is working with an appointed ad hoc committee. It consists of 11 members made up of leaders in the county's arts community and planners on the overall initiative. This is a larger initiative to coordinate the arts and culture. AMAC will be the lead applicant on this grant proposal and will be responsible for organizing the workshop, should it be funded. Working with AMAC on the ad hoc committee are leaders from the Dairy Barn, Stewart's Opera House, Passion Works, ACENet, the Athens County Planning Office, ACCVBE, Arts West, and individuals including Bill Morgan, Zach Hall, and David Reiser. The city has been involved through work with Paula Mosley, City Safety and Service Director, and Councilman Kent Butler. AMAC leadership has discussed aspects of the overall initiative with a number of others involved with the arts community in the county. With this leadership, and with the advantages offered Athens County by the recently opened Blenerhassett Bridge connection to the I-77 corridor and the soon-to-be-opened Nelsonville Bypass, offering ready access to Columbus and the I-70 and I-71 corridors, the time for such an opportunity has arrived. Workshop focused on action plans, programs that support county-wide strategies. The county and the city and all of the county's residents will benefit. The RFP offers $5,000 and requires $5,000 in matching fund, cash, or in-kind matching. $2,500 is being requested from Athens City Council, and $2,500 from the Athens County Commissioners to meet this requirement. Assistance from the TCF, Conservation Fund, and the Historical Preservation Group will be, included from them, will be two to three nationally known speakers, a faculty, and travel expenses, developing training materials, providing a master copy, their phone, email, and mail expenses throughout the planning process, and their review of the action plan following the workshop. Our obligations, responsibilities of the applicant include securing a workshop location, providing lodging and food, developing marketing materials, invitations and registrations, et cetera, paying for any additional speakers, preparing and copying selected handouts, notebooks, providing audiovisual equipment, arranging an opening reception if appropriate, arranging transportation, arranging pre- or post-workshop activities and tours, which are optional, drafting an action plan, implementing the action plan. Allowable costs, that is, what is listed in their RFP as in-kind allowable costs, include staff time, workshop meeting space, audiovisual equipment, meals, lodging, duplication of notebook materials, additional speakers, workshop tour transportations, and quote, "other miscellaneous expenses." I'm not quite sure what that means. The point is this. All of us who have worked on this agree that we don't want to make a commitment on anybody's part, the city or the county, unless we know that we have the guaranteed funds for match. Do I think we will need all of the guaranteed funds for match? I don't think so, because a lot of these resources that are mentioned here in the in-kind, we can provide with little or considerably less expense. I can't predict that at this point. Final thing I guess I should say to you is that we're here tonight to talk to you and to put it on the agenda so that you can deal with it and hopefully support it in time. It is due, seven hard copies in Washington on July the 22nd. I am meeting with Paula and with the county commissioners at 10 o'clock to present the same idea to them. We have vetted it through Eichenberg. We have been in contact with ACCVBE, who would be, of course, a very important part in all of this. And Paige certainly knows what we're doing here. She has copies of the draft. We have a draft finished of this grant proposal. I can provide copies of that to any of you who would like to see it. It is a draft, you know what I mean? And to reassure you, because you all know I do theater and direct plays and stuff like that, you know, I've got a guarantee from Eichenberg and Leslie Schaller that they will polish the grant before we put it in. Questions, comments, thoughts? Yes?
Number four.
I think this is a great opportunity, because it's directly related with economic development. I mean, it's not peripheral or anything when we look at our arts. I would encourage, because it's directly relating to a gateway community and national and state parks and forests, that somebody on the committee, the ad hoc committee, be related to the conservation or the outdoor recreational, expand it beyond the arts, just so that there's communication. Because sometimes there's this wall that happens between the arts and the outdoor recreation. And I think this is a great opportunity to be able to increase that communication across the board, and especially because the Conservation Fund is helping to fund this.
I couldn't agree with you more. There was a time in the '70s when I was producing a group called the Appalachian Green Parks Project, which was in direct support relationship with ODNR, Ohio Presidents of Ohio Mental Health. The bicentennial commission went on as a professional group for five years and made the albums and CDs and films that some of you have seen on television and stuff. But a more important point than that, my comfort with working with them, though those contacts are long gone, more important than that, my discussions with Bob Eichenberg have been, geez, you know, I haven't done what I should be doing to reach out to the supervisor of the Wayne National Forest. And so leave that up to me. I will make contacts. I will email her. I'll set up meetings. We've got to get this started. Because, again, I mean, one of the things I point out in the grant proposal is this. Frankly, Athens County, and of course, Athens City, has a huge, huge portion of its real estate tied up in tax-free, tax, non-income-producing situations. We need to find ways to bring other economic engines driven by tourism, culture, that can benefit us, can bring us, can cultivate our arts, can maintain our culture, can do all of these things, and still protect each other. The only way we can do that is working together. Many have tried doing it by themselves, some of the larger organizations. Some of this has been done very well by different organizations. But to my knowledge, there has not been a successful bringing together of these organizations, because I think only together will we be powerful enough and persuasive enough to get the job done.
And that's where I believe, Bob, that the professionals, the consultants, if we receive this. receive this grant, they're coming in, they're nationally renowned, and they're able to offer insight and information about what's been successful in the rest of the country or how to expand what we already have. So perhaps an expansion of something like Brew League or an expansion of some other idea that we haven't even derived as of yet. That's my understanding.
And that's really the point. This is not one of those things where everybody's going to sit around and say, well, what have we got going for us? We're supposed to have done that already with AMAC and the ad hoc committee. We are going through and making lists of all the artists, all the venues, all the cultural sites. We are making maps of the county with the sites. We're collecting all the material. You're supposed to have that done. You're supposed to have identified a certain number of specific things, targets that you have, targets like, for instance. A couple of things that everybody seems to love an idea of is a countywide internet communication system where all the artists and all the culture groups can join together, where you could book tickets to any event in the county from anywhere in the world. Hell, I could sit here and book tickets at the Royal Shakespeare Company in Stratford if I want to. And we can't get tickets, you know, for local organizations. We need to do that. We need to organize this. We need to bring it together. Other things that have been brought up are, for instance, Bob was talking the other day, he'd been talking to some people about forming new events, new focus events relating to the bike path. Here we have this wonderful bike path, which is a considerable asset, and it goes by Eclipse City, and it goes by the railroad, and it goes by the Hocking River, and it goes by all of these cultural assets and right near downtown Nelsonville and right through the middle of Athens and Ohio University. Can't we find together a way to take advantage of this and find ways to bring people here when we're not already totally filled with students and stuff? And drive an economic engine based on it? That is the gist of our proposal. And I think it's interesting, I suppose you all know this, interesting that, as you know, opera houses in the 19th and early 20th century were the center of each community. The communities competed with each other for excellence. They never had operas. They had basketball games. They had all kinds of meetings. They had all the music, all the culture and stuff from the second generation of Europeans that settled this part of the country. And of course, this building was the Athens Opera House. It's been converted to City Hall. The place downstairs, which is the courtroom, was the theater. I think that's kind of a fun fact.
Other comments, thoughts, questions?
If you're ready, July 22nd is pretty soon, and the grant, RFP, needs to be submitted by then. Have you put the details in, such as when you're planning to have a meeting, when these people might, when we're all getting together?
Actually, it is addressed very clearly in the RFP. First of all, they won't make the awards known until September. Then they have a five-month planning cycle to prepare for the meetings. They have specific, I mean, these people are very careful and very detailed about what this is all going to be. This is not just one of those slapdash things. So we're talking probably closer to a year than anything else before it actually happened. The other thing I should tell you is that unless you get an impression that I was not clear with Kent about this, we are allowed to bring 30 people to this workshop. So we would be, I think, pretty much in the business of working with the city, the county, and AMAC, and choosing which 30 leaders would be brought together, how they would represent the total interests of the county, the federal people at the forest, the ODNR, the arts, the governments, the whole thing. So that's another detail.
And.
I tried to condense down to, you know, right?
Does that answer the question? Because also, the ad hoc committee has met once, I believe, correct?
The ad hoc committee met once at the Dairy Barn this Wednesday. We're meeting around the county. This Wednesday, we're meeting at Stewart's Opera House, quite on purpose, to move it around. And the third meeting and final meeting scheduled for the ad hoc committee will be at the Federal Valley Resource Center in Stewart, Ohio. It is a county project.
It's a city-county collaboration.
It is a city-county collaboration, but it is not, it is the city and the county. Yes.
Number Gansey, did you have a question as well?
No, I think this is an ideal way to spend some of our tourism funds, especially with, you know, it definitely being one of the pegs of our local economy is tourism, and if this can help develop that.
So I suspect you need a letter of recommendation, at least from the city administration. What do you need from council since you're here?
I know Paula and I had this discussion earlier.
And perhaps, and perhaps I might be able to, essentially, our request would be to write an ordinance authorizing the application of the grant, and then also the obligation for the city's portion of the $2,500. And that would be initially to make sure that we're written in for $2,500, and we may find that there's ways, as noted in the in-kind, we don't spend all that $2,500.
And I assume it would have to be done on an emergency or something basis so that we could get that done in time. Because I think the grant will be stronger if I've got both the city and the county signed on formally.
Okay.
Do you?
Mayor Wile.
Do you have any history of how, chances of getting the award? I mean, you know, to say it's three grants nationwide, it really just means it's, I assume it's ARC, so therefore it's Appalachian region. So that means, I know Colorado's not running, and I know everything on that end.
Totally in the Appalachian region.
Okay.
Totally concentrated on that. All I can tell you is recently, AMAC and Arts West together submitted a grant that you know about to the Ohio Arts Council on a project grant, again, for a small amount of money to help fund putting this initiative together. The panel met about a month ago and ranked the 90-some, '97, '98 applicants in the state of Ohio. We scored 85. There were 22 above us, and the rest of them were below us. So it was, had to be considered a successful grant, given that a lot of the people that were above us were no brainers. I mean, you know, big city, big organization, big deals. And here we are. So we know, we don't know, but we surmise that we'll probably get some support from them. Some of that may be able to be used as match for this. What we don't know, and I have a call-in to the coordinator of this whole thing, is can state money be used to match federal money? Money cannot be used to match state money, and federal money cannot be used to match federal money, but can they co-mingle? So we'll find that out. I know that when I've talked with Paige Allows, the executive director of ACCVBE, I'm kind of saying these details, you all know them, but somebody else is watching, she thinks we've got a real good chance. I know that Eichenberg thinks we've got a real good chance. We know that they've tried before and gotten some grants, and it hasn't worked, but there are reasons that had to do with being too ambitious in terms of geography, trying to include too big a bite out of the apple, and a number of other factors. And Bob thinks we've learned, and that we can go forward with this learning and accomplish this. So that's stressed in the proposal.
All in all, I think it's a good idea, the idea stressing regional art and culture. You know, I think that works out. Realize we just, as I said, we just got the review for the comprehensive plan, talking about stressing this type of stuff, so I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, yeah, I believe that as well, too, that we're being good stewards of the comprehensive plan by acknowledging that there's been a lot of work put into creation of the comprehensive plan and now trying to implement some of the details from there. Any other thoughts, observations, comments? Mr. Winters?
May I break, make one other comment disrelated to this, but related to emails from both you and Councilman Butler, Mayor Wile and Councilman Butler. Concerned about the fact that AMAC is not represented on the city's website, which had come up from various citizens. We understand that. I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus and say blah, 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 but we aren't there, okay? So for whatever reason, we aren't there. We are currently, on AMAC, reviewing extensively the public arts policy, the public performance policy, the public murals policy specifically, and will go around the percent for the arts policy again, so that when we do come to you, hopefully and not too distant a time, we will have these policies that can be put on the website under the Athens Municipal Arts Commission so that the citizens can find answers and all of that.
It wasn't criticism, it was actually trying to make it more accessible, because I realized that we needed to have this more out there so people know the process. We've had this conversation about how does a mural get up on a wall? How do we address public art?
Exactly. And we all agree that that's the correct thing to do. What it has caused us to do is to want to review them before we put them back out in public. Some of them were written as five or six years ago, and the world has changed. The most recent ones were only two or three years ago, so that's what's going on with that.
And thank you, Mr. Winters, for reminding me of that as well, because this will aid in communication and clarify needs and concerns from county members that may have desired to address some of these issues like public art and murals and performance policy. So thank you again. I believe that there's no other further comments or observations, that ends Arts Park integration. Thank you again, Mr. Winters. Thank you, council members, Mayor, Service Safety Director. Onto finance and personnel.
Onto finance and personnel. We just listed miscellaneous, but I understand that particularly our service safety director has some miscellaneous issues for finance and personnel.
I think you've covered quite a few of them already, right?
I believe so. We have the $5,000 additional, I believe it's going to have to come from the general fund for paving of the Upper College Street line, because it can come out of a proprietary fund. So I believe, I'll get with the auditor and she'll locate and identify. And then the other one, I think I gave to Ms. Coon. Ms. Coon.
Thank you. The Service Safety Director handed this to me tonight. It's a request from George Ann Thomas, the Albany mayor, for a police cruiser. She says that, Dear Paula, Marshal Robert Deardorff has mentioned to us that the city of Athens may be disposing of a cruiser. The village of Albany is in need of a police cruiser, but is not at this time in a position to purchase one. Marshal Deardorff indicated that the city might be willing to donate or sell a cruiser to us. Please consider this as a request and let us know if it is possible and what the cost might be. I think this would be a really good thing, good thing for us to do.
Wouldn't take a bus instead.
That's what Nancy said, too.
Find a place for those buses.
It saves us money because then they don't have to decommission the car, as we found out once before when we had this discussion.
I think that's a.
So do we all agree that we'll just donate a cruiser to Albany?
Have we authorized the mayor, the administration, to do that? Do we need to do anything else?
I think we've got a few cruises that we're abandoning.
We are purchasing one and decommissioning two. And so they're requesting for one of those.
Use the language on the buses. Or she can do whatever, you know, any number of different things.
Okay.
Cool.
Great. We'll go forward.
Mayor Wile. One other thing, I received an email from the audit, the city auditor, the 23rd of June, and there saying that we received a payment for the impact fees for the border regions. This is our yearly impact. We got grant total of $26,778, so $27,000. That shows you the amount we have, but at least we got some money from the border regions. There's impact for the university and the land, et cetera.
In total?
Total, that's it.
Oh, okay.
Better than nothing.
Yeah, better than nothing.
It's gone steadily down over the years, as you know, but with the state budget situation.
It's amazing.
We should be grateful we have any.
Occasionally, it falls out of the budget till the last minute, so I think as much as about four months ago, she was saying it wasn't even in their line item. It showed up and it's been, she received, so that's a good thing.
And appreciated by the city.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, any other issues? We've covered some of your concerns in previous meetings, okay. So I think the consensus is yes to the cruiser, and if we discover that we need to do anything else to authorize that, we will next Tuesday. Otherwise, we'll let this committee. And we will adjourn this special session of Athens City Council at 8:35.